Okay, we'll call the meeting to order for the September 11th meeting. We're in order for the county commissioners. Before we stand for a moment of solid prayer, let's remember this is Patriots' Day and we're, we ask that you would remember the people who lost their lives on 9/11 and the families and those who are still suffering and be thankful that we have the freedom that we have and we can overcome events like that that happen. Please stand for a moment of solid prayer and call. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Officer Thomas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to remind all the speakers that we would like you to state your name and your municipality of residence and you'll be given three minutes to speak. First on the list, Peggy Abelson.
Good morning Peggy Abelson, Bishopstown Township. I have three announcements to coin. First announcement, Commissioner Exon requested, I announce that you can now view the Commissioners' public meetings at your convenience. You can access and view the meetings from the county website at www.co.bottler.p.a.us. When you get to the website, under County Commissioners, you can click on James Exon, which will take you to his webpage, then click on the link which will take you to the YouTube site where you can view the public meetings. Second announcement, this Saturday, September 14th, at 8:00 PM in the Marzera High School Auditorium, there will be an oldies concert featuring The Holidays. The Holidays is an oldies group from the Pittsburgh area and they will be performing hits from the 50s, 60s, and 70s. The proceeds from the concert will go to the Glade Run Lake Conservancy and aid them in restoring the lake. The Conservancy was formed in 2011 after the 52-acre lake was drained. Currently Conservancy has over 1,860 members and raised close to $150,000 for their cause. Ticket information or if you would like to be a member, you can get more information at their website, which is gladrunlakeconservancy.org. My third announcement is if you have a family member suffering from Alzheimer's and would like to participate by providing input at one of the Alzheimer's Planning Committee hearings, you have two opportunities to do so. First hearing will be held September 16th at Clarion Hospital. Second hearing will be held September 17th at the University of Pittsburgh, William Pitt Union Building. Your voice can make a difference and if you'd like to have further information, you can go to the state's website at www.aging.state.p.a.us. Thank you.
Here we go.
I'd like to comment on what Peggy said there if I could. I had the leader of Glade Run Lake called me a Ziggy. I'm not sure how you pronounce his last name, we just all call him Ziggy. But anyway, he called me up and he asked me this, it was a quote by Bill McCarrion in Butler Eagle last week, or I think, believe it was the Saturday and Sunday paper, that said if the county commissioners wanted to give money to Glade Run Lake, they'd have to raise the tax pay, the money from the taxpayers. I looked this up, I went to the Controller's Office, and we currently have over $300,000 from the Legacy Fund from Marcella Shale. That has to be used for things in parks. It was great forethought that the, our legislators, everybody complains about a lot of what the legislators do, but they, they had the forethought that earmark money for parks and wrecks, greenway spaces, trails. So, I'd like to rebut Bill McCarrion's comment that we'd have to raise taxes to give money to Glade Run Lake. It's a very important, it's a mom and apple pie. You know, taking your kid and putting a worm on the hook or going canoeing or kayaking in a, that's populated area is not a luxury item. That is a very common sense thing to do. I did it when I grew up. We would not have to raise taxes. We should take that money that's earmarked for that and distribute it properly. That's what I believe. We do not have to raise taxes to do it. Our legislature already did it to solve the problem. They also did that with bridges. We have money, over a quarter million dollars given to the county each year, each year for bridge replacement in Butler County. They did a great job there. I appreciate what they did. We don't have to raise taxes, they earmarked money from Marcella Shale to do it. So, I'd like to correct that misrepresentation. Thank you.
Okay, it was not a mistake, but we have our own needs within the county for that money also. We've been asked to spend a million dollars in re-amping our swimming pool, which we can use that money for. So, there's only so much money to go around. We can spend it at the playground, we can spend it in our own pool. There are many places throughout the county that that money could be spent, so I'd be most certain we will. All right, anybody else?
Yes, Mark Meninsky.
Morning Commissioners.
Hi, Mark.
I had a couple things. One, I see the bill, the new building is progressing along. I guess it's, looks like we do need one. Only thing I'm worried about with it is the amount of debt that would be added to the county's, the 52 million, I guess we're already in debt. That's the only thing I'm worried about it at all. Little more parking, I actually do like the parking idea. We don't have enough parking now for county employees, really don't. I'm just thin lines along the parking, without me in the park, Almea Park Road, the park that was closed by the county. There's lots of parking up the top, run the cycle. At the lower end, there's only three or four spaces and so that sometimes gets a little full. Notice that one there run through there. That's it guys. Hey, how's it doing?
Thank you, Mark. And I would correct you, our debt is not 52 million after the payments we made in July. I believe it's down, I have to refer to the Controller, I think it's 49, a little under 49. So, the debt is going down. Grab.
I'd like to comment on what Mark said. I disagree with Bill McCarrion. Our pension fund, they're having new, our pension fund is underfunded by $40 million under the new regulations on schools, county entities. That is included on our law statement, okay? That is under the new regulations, not my regulations. It's an accepted standard. So, it's 40 million plus whatever debt we have, plus I do not believe, you know, they're going to add on to the debt, okay? So, it's not any ways near. Do we consider the 40 million underfunded pension plan a liability? I'm sitting at this desk and I sure do. Come on, that's what the new regulations say. That's what I get taught at CCAP. That's what I get taught at papers. You can't say that it's not our liability. It is for the schools, it is for the state, and it is for the county. To do anything, say anything different is a rumeus. And I always like to say about Mark, I strictly disagree with your premise that $1.5 million at 100,000 a space is a good expenditure for the taxpayers. That is not a good expenditure. And I don't believe it'll ever be made. It's an opulent parking garage. Nobody would ever spend their own money for $100,000 a spot to park eight hours during the day, five days a week. It wouldn't happen. That is not good expenditure. I thank you for coming, Mark, but we disagree on that issue. We don't need any parking. We had all the parking spaces we needed under city regulations for that, to build the building. We didn't need any parking spaces. They just don't want to get snow on their head or walk across an alley for 30 feet, okay? Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on, we have minutes for our August 26th and August 28th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed. Minutes are approved. Old business.
Under old business, Mr. Chairman, we'd ask your approval of the revised policy on overtime and methods of compensation for overtime.
We have a policy that's posted, has been posted. Is there a motion to accept this?
I make the motion, we accept it.
Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion?
Did we decide on the amount yet or? I apologize. I mean, I thought we were in the discussion at the money meeting, about 40 hours or 80.
Well, you wanted to change it to 80, but the other two did not, so it remains 40 on this policy.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks for making that clear to me.
All those in favor of the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed?
No.
The policy, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no proclamations or certificates this morning. Moving on to new business. First item under Community Development Block Grant Program, Wendy Lesko. Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Wendy.
Good morning Wendy. First item, we're asking your approval for the 2013 Community Development Block Grant application in the amount of $509,603 for the attached list that you received, and approval to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development the 2013 Community Development Block Grant application on behalf of the County of Butler and the entitlements of Jefferson Township and Penn Township, including the approval of the county's three-year community development plan. We ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? Motion carries.
We're asking your approval of Resolution 2013-16, which is the resolution of filing. This is for the filing of the application for 2013 CDVG funds for the county and the entitlements of Jefferson Township and Penn Township. This will authorize the chairman to sign all the applicable paperwork, including the Statement of Goals, Certification of Community Development Plan, Disclosure Report, Statement of Assurances, and all other applicable documents. We ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed?
That wasn't on, I'm sorry, it was on. Okay.
All right, the motion carries.
We ask for your approval for the adoption of Resolution 2013-17, the Fair Housing Resolution, to reappoint Perry O'Malley, who is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the County of Butler, as the county's Fair Housing Officer. This is to prevent discrimination against housing for people based on race, gender, religious creed, ancestry, national origin, handicap, or disability when it comes to housing. We ask for your approval.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Did we get a resume on Perry or?
Did we what?
Get a resume on Perry or?
Perry's been doing this for years.
Yeah, I'm just trying to jack him a little bit. He's not here.
Oh, okay. Well, he did, he did agree. I wrote him a letter each year and asked him if he would, and he did agree to be.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Those in favor?
I couldn't let him off both these.
Those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
And lastly, we ask your approval to enter into cooperation agreements with the entitlement municipalities of Jefferson Township and Penn Township for the administration of their 2013 Community Development Block Grant Funds. We ask for your approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, I guess.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, under Human Services, Children and Youth, and Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities. Louise Anne Brown.
Good morning Commissioners. First item I have is asking approval of two contracts with Children and Youth and Administration Departments for fiscal year July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, '14. There was the adoption connection and Glade Run and Glade Service. Ask your approval of those two contracts.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
Next, asking approval of several contract amendments for fiscal year 1213, mental health and intellectual disabilities fees are funds through our block grant. There was Milestone Center, Glade Run and Glade Services, Great Buy Center, Center for Community Resources, and our state. Ask your approval of those two contracts.
We can do those as one motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, I guess.
Next set of items, under Human Services, Community Action and Development, Diddy County. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We are requesting to ratify the electronic submission of the Consolidated Systems Grant Agreement for Community Transportation Services, PA Department of Transportation. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. Butler County was awarded funding for the following transportation services. Shared riding lottery funding, $576,000. Persons with disability funding, $134,000, and welfare work program, $30,000. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
We are requesting approval to enter into a contract with Alliance for Nonprofit Resources for provisional transportation services under the county's shared ride transportation program. Term of the contract is October 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. This is a fee-for-service contract reimbursement rate of $10.75 per one-way trip within the zone and in an additional $3.50 for each additional zone crossed. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
We are requesting approval to enter into a contract with Alliance for Nonprofit Resources for provisional services under the welfare work transportation program. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, in the amount mon Moncree of $30,000. We ask your approval.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
We are requesting approval to enter into a contract with Alliance for Nonprofit Resources for implementation of a volunteer program to assist with transportation needs. Funding from the Community Services Block Grant in the amount of $8,000. The term of the contract is January 1st, 2013 through December 31st, 2013. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor? Go ahead.
I just think this is really important to our community. I hopefully, to get, this is a big problem with our elderly and handicapped and everything, to have transportation to get to groceries or doctor appointments and stuff. So, I really commend your office on doing this. It's so much needed. We get calls on this, as Commissioner, I get calls on this and how much cars, insurance expenses are so much, that people can't afford to go to these really important trips, whether you're, you know, any handicap. The blind association has their own program, but a lot of entities do not. So, I really appreciate Janine for doing this, okay? Working on that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
We are requesting to enter into contracts with quality agencies for housing services provided under the 2013-2014 Homeless Assistance Program through the Human Services Block Grant. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. CAC charities, $59,000. Victim Outreach Intervention Center, $55,239. And the Lighthouse Foundation, $6,300. We ask your approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
We are requesting approval to enter into an agreement with Lawrence County Community Action for funding for the Supportive Services for Veteran Families Program through the Department of Veterans Affairs. Lawrence Community Action submitted an application on behalf of community action agencies in six county area to assist homeless or near homeless veterans and their families. The term of the contract is October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014, and the amount is $125,250. We ask your approval.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
We are requesting approval to enter into a subcontract agreement with Center for Community Resources for the provision of services under the Supportive Services for Veteran Families Program. Term of the contract is October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014, and the contract amount is $124,500. And we are asking any veterans or veteran families out there in the community, if they would like more information or see if they are eligible for this, we are referring them all to the Center for Community Resources Information and Referral Line, which is 724-431-3748. Ask your approval for this contract.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine.
Do you want to give that phone number one more time? Because I think people can't get it quick enough.
Absolutely. Any veterans or veteran families in the community that would like more information on support of services for veteran families programs, is to assist them with housing, in a housing crisis. We're referring everyone, Center for Community Resources, Information and Referral Line, which is 724-431-3748.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, under Recycling and Waste Management, Cheryl Kelly.
Good morning Commissioners.
Hi Cheryl.
For county, all the county owned facilities, our current three-year contract with Waste Management for garbage and recycling services is going to expire on November the 3rd. And I'm just requesting that we redid that, that would be another four-year contract. Do I ask your permission?
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
Thanks Cheryl.
Mr. Chairman, the first item under Commissioners is the appointment of Paul Harris, Senior of Traco, to the Butler County Community College Board Trustees. We'd like your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
The next item, our reappointments to the Tri-City Workforce Investment Board for three-year terms to expire September 30th, 2016. They are Doug Bartosch of New Mac Manufacturing, Scott Dockerty of CID Inc., Kerry Ginaki of Hunter Truck Sales and Service Incorporated, and Linda Shell, who is the state's nominee from the Pennsylvania Bureau of Workforce Development Partnership.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries. And we would like to thank these people for agreeing to serve on that board because it's tough to get people to make that commitment.
The next item is adoption of Resolution 2013-18 to donate two used county vehicles to the Blind Association of Butler. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
I'd like to say something about this. I talked to the Blind Association. One of these cars has 48,000 on it, but the undercarriage, Marty, I call up, Marty called me, Amy asked him to, but Marty called me and I was concerned, but one of the cars has 48,000 miles on it. But the trouble is, it was not rust proofed, it's 11 years old and has, the undercarriage is degrading on it. I talked to the Blind Association, what this car is going to be used for, is they have volunteers and they have this program already in effect, that to take people that are blind to get groceries, make medical trips. And I really commend them on that. And I, I'm very thankful that the county can support this program. Theirs is already in effect. We're trying to do this throughout the county with different organizations. But when he explained it to me, I'm very grateful that we can help them in supporting them in this need for people with, for the blind, so that's a good thing.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
The next item is ratification of an agreement granting a right of way to Sheets Incorporated.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is approval of engineering services contract with Peterson &amp; Peterson for the Cranberry Magisterial District Justice Office Project in Cranberry Township, and we ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
The next item is permission to submit the 2013-2014 Loss Prevention Grant application to the Pennsylvania County's Risk Pool, known as PCORP, for up to $12,500 in matching funds to be used for a digital recorder and cameras outside the courtrooms in the government center and to replace the duct sensors in the fire detection system in the prison. And this is a grant that supports projects that will help with safety or prevention of loss or risk prevention in the county.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I'd just like to say this PCORP is through CCAP, or County Commissioners Association. They ain't really done well. I'm trying to control insurance costs and this is, this is really a good program. I'm thankful that they applied for this, but we, Sunny View, they provide the, you know, this risk management pool, insurance at a much lower rate than we were paying before. So, this is really a good thing for all the counties and the state. I appreciate them doing that.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
The last item, Mr. Chairman, we're asking your approval of a volume licensing agreement and select plus affiliate registration with Microsoft to allow the county to purchase Microsoft products under the state contract. And Microsoft requires the county to affirm that it is eligible to receive state funding on its products. Products.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Amy, that is at no cost, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you, Paul lawyer. We don't get very many things at no cost, so that was great.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No. Motion carries.
That's all for new business.
Okay, budgetary transfer. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is proposed? No.
That's a aye for me, too.
Approval of the new hire, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Approval of travel requests. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Question carries. Approval of the requisitions. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Question carries. Approval of check registers. Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Question carries. Reports, Jim?
Okay. You don't get to go first today, do you?
No.
Okay. I thought it'd be nice to give you a chance. My report today is in two parts. I'm, give me a little, before I get shut down here, give me a little time. I'll get to the main points. I'm one of the luckiest guys in Butler County. I have an attractive, hard-working, intelligent wife. She has a bachelor's degree from Geneva College and a research position at the University of Pittsburgh. This year was our 30th year together. We have three good children. My daughter is in the top 2% of her class at Pitt in accounting. And she'll be graduating, and had a business major, too. She's got a double major. She'll be graduating in December. And she works at Merrill Lynch to help pay for her education. I'm very proud of her. I have two sons. My 20-year-old is enrolled at Pitt Titusville and is doing well there. I just started back. My 17-year-old son is a senior at Butler High School and a defensive starter in the soccer team. This year, five games in, Butler Soccer is not allowed to go. So, go Butler Soccer. They always do that on Tim Riss or Meet the Press. They mention sports. So, I thought, I thought I'd put a plug in there for Butler Soccer as a proud parent. I made a mistake. Here's my main thing. I made a mistake in the opening of the last public meeting when I first started explaining myself about Bill McCarron and not agreeing on Butler County issues. What I meant to say when I started that was, we have a fundamental monetary, philosophical, and ethical difference on how governments should function. My disagreements with Bill McCarron are truly philosophical, along with a generational gap, arrogance, and elitism thrown into the mix. One of the other reasons that I'm one of the luckiest guys in Butler County besides my family is being elected by the people of Butler County to serve them as their Butler County Commissioner. It is truly an honor and privilege for me to serve in that capacity. I work hard at the job and I'm truly humbled by the support I get from county residents who frequently come up to me and share their thoughts, both positive and negative. One thing I really appreciate is that people have accepted me, including my faults. A perfect example of that is when I wasn't too clear on explaining myself at the last meeting, when I started the meeting. I tell no one that I'm a very good public speaker. In addition to that, about half of my issues are ones that elected officials never make public. Most of their focus on keeping these issues hidden in government, and it makes a lot of my topics so much harder to present when you do these things. The beautiful thing about this issue to me is that people do not vote, they never voted for a pig in the poke, or to have to pick between curtain number one, two, and three. I researched the issues and I presented when I attended over 100 county meetings. And I spoke at every one of those meetings. I am not some slick overdressed politician who tells you what you want to hear to get elected. In fact, I'm not a politician at all, but for the process. I am a public servant. When have you ever seen a politician that doesn't take as much as he can get from deferred pension, healthcare, lobbyist dinners with free-flowing liquor, exorbitant donations, per diem expenses, and the plushness of amenities? The new parking garage and $100,000 a spot. And the list goes on. I do none of it. None of it. Sure, I make public mistakes and mistakes, but I made lots before I got elected. And I'm, and electorate voted for me knowing of my faults. And I'm very grateful for that acceptance. We're a local community, and I think they look at the whole person rather than just certain things. You know, when people stutter, get nervous in public speaking, or change their train of thought before they get a message fully across, it in no way means they are not smart or not willing to learn. It means it's a very hard challenge for them to overcome, which is the situation in my case. I accept the challenge and constantly work harder on trying to improve all aspects of my position. I'm so humbled and grateful for this opportunity to serve my constituents. Giving up is not in my vocabulary, but working hard to overcome these roadblocks and obstacles is. I will continue on that journey. My second part of my speech today is, I have spoke several times at these meetings on how instrumental educational conferences are through CCAP, which stands for the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. We have three meetings a year, spring, summer, and fall. It's similar to when our kids go to college. You have a choice. You can either go to class, study and participate, learn and achieve knowledge, or you can go and screw around the party too much. CCAP is no different, except if you go and don't apply yourself to taxpayers and getting ripped off instead of the parents. In my case, I believe the taxpayers are getting a good value for their money. On October 2nd, 2013, I will complete my final course needed for CCAP's Academy of Excellence program to graduate. I will accomplish that in one and a half years in the program, and I believe I'm the first county commissioner from Butler County to complete that program requirements. I will be very proud of that accomplishment, especially in the light of the fact my colleagues and their political cronies and management and the Butler Eagle, uh, management, Butler Eagle management are always trying to vilify me for being some sort of cross between a buffoon and a Clarence Thomas discriminator of women. And with a predisposition of violence thrown in, but in the mix by Judge Durk. I mean, wow. How could, how could anyone ever top those allegations? I must be doing a damn good job of making the county more open and honest and transparent, or those in power would despise and hate me so much. The main point of this part of my report is to expound on what I've learned at one of my CCAP classes. It was titled Labor Negotiations 101. It was taught by two members of a law firm who specialize in labor negotiation for public entities. They knew their subject very well and they were very interactive with the class, and I learned a lot. One of the main lessons I learned, taught during Labor Negotiations 101 class, was leadership has to be a role model for sacrifices for union employees are asked to make. I remember thinking to myself, why are they telling us? Does, does this ever happen that they don't, they try to take away from the junior employees before the leadership takes that role? It just sounds like good common sense to me. It's sort of no-brainer, so to speak, in labor negotiations. Like we were taught in school by British monarchs, Marie Antoinette. If they can't afford bread, let them eat cake. Do people even try that stuff? Well, it's happening right here in Butler County in Sunnyview. Bill McCarron and Dale Pinkerton spearheaded a campaign to have employees make, making the same pay five times, pay five times as much for their healthcare. Five times as much. You know, that's, that's their tactic, themselves. Don't pay, don't, you know, for what they make. It's based on how much you make. So, they want to pay, have them pay five times as much as them paying no extra. Five times as much. That also goes for the lead negotiators, too, Mike English and Lori Alman. Now, would this sound starting, would this be a sound-starting point if you asked the citizens in this county of, the county commissioners represent? I'm sure they'd think it would be, not be a sound decision. It makes sense in Bill and Dale's mind because they got elected and now they're members of the privileged class. The county is paying over 16,000 a year for each of the commissioners and their spouses for healthcare coverage. Who's needs Medicare and co-insurance? Let the taxpayers pick up the tab. Okay? I pick up my own. Any concessions to be made in this county should first be made by the elected officials. Next, it should be implemented to the 180 non-union employees. And third and finally, it should be, tried to be negotiated in good faith with the union contract workers. This is our duty as elected officials to be role models, to set precedent, to be leaders. That is what leadership is about, whether in the military, a school principal, a coach. Leaders set the standard. Now, non-union employees in this county make 50,000 a year. If you average 50,000 a year, you only pay $62 a month for your healthcare. Now, that doesn't sound right to me. $62 a month if you make 50,000. But the other employees are supposed to pay five times that much. That, the healthcare premium that costs 19,000, $62 for 19,000. The only, the other two commissioners pay 105 per month. I voluntarily paid one, three and a half times that amount for healthcare. That is, that is wrong. It doesn't make common sense. It is not leadership. Any cuts and sacrifice should be distributed evenly throughout the county period, not just at Sunnyview. The other two commissioners believe Sunnyview should be privatized. I do not. Commissioners Pinkerton and McCarron falsely believe that if UPMC who manages Sherwood Oaks in Cranberry, that's a retirement facility, takes over Sunnyview, they will serve the middle class, the working poor and the indigent. They will not. Or else they just don't care about the poor and indigent. Church on Sunday, business on Monday.
That's time.
Okay? That's what is, that's what they believe in. I'm done. I'm on time.
Bill?
Thank you.
Folks, I don't have a lot to talk about today. I do, I would like to say, though, that I was at a children and youth board meeting this morning, and we have young people, there's about seven of them, who go out into the community on a day-to-day basis and check on children that are, are having problems in their families. And they, they have a backpack that they give to the families when they go in, because these kids need things like toothbrushes and toothpaste. And there are organizations that have done fundraisers for them. And they do have those backpacks. But one of the things that, I'm going to see if we can't put a box downstairs in the front lobby, but one of the things that they really, really need at this time are formula. Okay? They go into some of these homes and these little babies and kids don't have formula. They need diapers desperately, and they need wipes. And believe it or not, they've got a fair amount of young girls and so forth, girls underwear, but they really need little boys underwear. And I mean, that goes from little boys to little bigger boys. But if you're out in the store and you think that you'd like to help with something like that, it would be greatly appreciated if you would buy some and either drop it off, drop it off here at the county, and maybe we could come up with another place or two in the county that people could drop that off. Because the young ladies that work at this job says it is so rewarding for them when they walk into a home to be able to help those families with just simple little things like that. And of course, toothbrushes and toothpaste, that kind of thing. It's amazing. And they're there to help the family and help that child. And I just would like to see us, if we could possibly do it, to support that part of our program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. I just have one quick comment on what Jim said in his report. He said that there's been many allegations made against him, therefore he must be doing a good job. I submit that the allegations might be made because they're true. Is there a motion adjourned?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
(laughing)
Those in favor say aye.
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 No.
Kayla?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Tom?
Uh, thank you. To my extent, if I understood you correctly, are you saying the county wants Sunnyview union workers to pay five times more for their healthcare than they do now? What you meant?
That, that was the opening salvo.
Commissioner?
I, I can't.
I counsel you against discussing union negotiations in public. That can be illegal.
Yeah, I have to watch that.
Very closely.
The contract is not open, by the way. Just make this sure you write this down, Tom. The contract is not open, okay? We are not formally negotiating the contract.
That's not true.
It's not open, okay?
We are negotiating with Sunnyview, and that is all that I can say.
Well, I just, I understand you correctly, Mike. Your county is negotiating with the union about the possibility of reopening the contract.
It's a question of semantics. You do not have to have a vote to have a discussion. The union chose, and you can ask them why, to not have a vote. It is not, I can tell you generally, that as a matter of law, the only thing they would have to vote on is any changes or any extensions to the current contract.
Thank you. The new BC3 appointee, is he replacing someone?
Yes. Don Polensky. He was superintendent of schools at Seneca Valley, and he retired, and he's just moved on to other positions.
Thank you. And the sheets, is this their, they needed a new right-of-way agreement for their proposed relocation?
They need to buy 356 a little bit. They need to move that backpack, make their entrance possible, according to the pen dock.
Turn lane, Ray, Bill?
I don't think it's a full-fledged turn lane, is it?
I am.
I'll verify. Thank you. And if someone could summarize, what's the basic difference of the new overtime policy as opposed to what you have now?
The comp time you're in.
So, no difference in overtime. You're just saying you're putting a guideline in for what the, how much comp time somebody can build up in the county? Is that correct?
That's probably the biggest difference. There are some changes to the methods by which it will be approved.
And unfortunately, no one is around from these days. There's somebody on this sheet I was given I could call, and I can provide this. Mike, if you can, at your convenience, can verify.
What's the question?
Well, this is a '92 memo that was circulated within the county by a former chief clerk, saying the policy of comp time should cease immediately, and any comp time owed should be used up by the end of 1992. The Board of Commissioners is placing all county personnel on notice that no comp time will be honored by the county unless prior approval has been granted in writing by the county commissioners.
I'm familiar with that document. I can't really tell you anything about it historically other than at some point subsequent to that memorandum, the county adopted the policy that the current policy replaces.
Okay.
Or amends.
Thank you. That's all I have.